Okay, call meeting to order.
Charlie?
Here.
John, present. Carl?
Here.
Karen?
Yeah.
Andy?
Here.
There's.
Why do we give you the difference between the by, but the United States over there? And two zero we all have lit, which is hands, one ignition. But yeah, it is follow up. The other, it's just sort of.
Where's your home?
You had to get rolling.
Yeah, the first day there were two cars that were taken.
So long as part of the left to come here.
You know, always a year.
Yeah.
That's kind of, they never got out of there. So we all, we're trying to live in there. There's there. So.
We're gonna assign vouchers. So you guys can talk amongst yourself for a while.
Would I be assigned some boy to kind of speed it up or?
No, no, it's good.
Let's get a little ready first.
Hey, there's no let up. There you go.
Fine. No, no. Show them. Tell me. Have a. 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 I don't even need. So why show me? I'm just waiting. I mean.
It's empty. We're down in the arms. Oh, and he's made some. Yeah, that's how we did it. They've got the same. They can feed. I don't. We don't know salt. It's very fun. Exactly. They're getting, they're getting no salt this year?
Yeah, actually, I said more again, and it's been coming in right along, so.
Right.
Well, here, I've touched it earlier for a while.
Yeah, well, we never had it. Get any, oh, we never ran on. But we need to. To make sure that. That much. It's not. It's not. Is a.
No, a lot of towns, they haven't once, they haven't got them. In some. Yeah, we've been planned bad. Just for most of.
They, uh, they've been bringing you very long. You're excited or actually.
That's what I'm telling. Make sure both probably, if they get paid for my. Our girls all there. Still going down here. They have one. The lives of my son. I saw, you know, this. Boy, it's good. It's great. You know, that is just too. That's just very, very. And I like where the jig was in all the time. He made a hundred.
Yeah. Oh, you, yeah, I know. You were right. You know, I guess I would say right. I should. Well, you didn't get up. It was hard, everybody. Right, obviously.
I believe the one I hold during that. So that's. So that's. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
More of that. More of the initial landing list. Something. You can find your people. Yeah. Which is. You can have.
Very. Right there. There you go there. So. They're like, you know, very. They encounter, so you can work with your partner. So. So. We stop. The thing to do every time. You may hear it by time. Then. Don't push me. This is. I mean, I really try to leave you. Because sometimes they show us. Like. You know. We would. We touch.
Yeah. Sure. But that was.
I didn't buy it. Yeah. The word.
That is more.
We. Care. And it was.
That's what this is all about. I feel like.
It's a. It's a. It's a. No.
Yeah. That's how you. Work it. My life is.
So, you know, you think it's a bad, you know, it was a life. This is the memory of music. And I'm saying, what's doing? I think. Going to get ordered. And I want to have it. You know. Maybe. And this shit I'm trying to say. Right? You know, I feel bad. And I don't. We didn't. Hold it. And I just forgot all system, all system. Thank you. So.
I'm proud of you.
So. Probably. Any good bet? Then.
The. 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 It's not.
Oh, it's really. Really. Oh, my. I mean, you know, so just to raise the roof. Yeah, it's a Bible marriage. So. That's. Oh, that's a little better, right?
But. That's good. That's. That's all.
It's a. A.
Sorry. You know.
He said. He said. I always. I miss many of the things.
What's that?
Yeah.
Big, yes.
I mean.
Did I? You're. Down. Or. I see. You should be like. Try. We do this.
All of them. It's a little fire.
Should be. Actually.
I'm not that. That's. Do. Yeah.
Just. It's.
But I'm good to see. I don't need that. I need to be the champion to go. Nothing.
I thought it about. You know. They. They want to be frustrated. It's. It's. This is. So. Not the.
All the things under. So. You know.
It's small. So. You know.
I'm going to be. I'm going to be. Saying.
I just. I can't. It's. Up in the lungs today. Hope to. There's red shirt. Because of. But. Dad. Instead of. You know. You know.
She's.
Done. That's. Yeah. Well, we're. Good. So. There's already done something. The whole of the job. I'm arguing. Well, yeah. I'm a. I'm a. I'm a. It's all third. Or something. And. So. Look. I'm. I'm. It's. And. I have. I have. I have.
I'm. Even though she's staying here to shoot. Down here.
We. Few times. So back. I think. Yeah. You're doing. I think. Very. Now, get. I want to do this. Back in a little. I think. You. She didn't go back. Oh, she has. Well. What? I. Straight. And then we. Change. I think she has a sister. That. I mean. She. That. Because. If you haven't. I wonder the other. They're dead. They're. But it's. Up there. It's. It's.
So.
You know. That's. We choose. Or. You have to. No. It's amazing. We say. Of course. You.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah.
And. We. Have. A. Second. Good. But. I put in. Their. Name. Or.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. That's. Already.
There. Everyone is something. That's it. We have. Everything. And we just. Yeah. There's solutions. Because we. Yeah. So. They have to hide. For. Change. Because they. Can stand. And this.
It's. I have. A.
It's very. To that. It's. Yeah. And. I. That. It's. It's all. Yeah. Well. That's. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. It's. It's.
It's all that.
It's. Something. You have.
And they have. I think. They have. Works. They. Scare. Ready. Go. Just. The. They. Call. Right. We're. We just. Maybe.
Mm-hmm.
So. So. They. Sorry. Bring back. We're hiding. That's all. I. So. It's. 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 Right. This time. See. I guess.
We went.
Except for. I'm sure. But I'm. So. I am. Where. I'm. I'm. And that. It's. They. Most wanted to be in the history. And Jesus. That before. Or. They still have. You have. And. I've. Had. And. And. All. This. So.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So.
I just called.
All right. I'm gonna. Read the legal notice. Public hearing. Uh, Cude County Legal Notice. Notice of Public Hearing on Water District Number Two Project for the C- CDBG Grant of two million dollars. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Sterling Board on Monday, July twenty first, twenty twenty five at six oh five P M. At the Sterling Town Hall. Twelve ninety, State Route one oh four A, Sterling, New York. To hear all persons regarding the district. Water District Number Two Project for the CDBG Grant of two million dollars. Copies of the proposed CDBG Grant are provided, are available at the Sterling Town Clerk's Office, twelve ninety, State Route one oh four A, Sterling, New York, one three one five six. All persons so interested will be heard at such time and place by over the town of the Sterling Town Board dated June twenty third twenty twenty five. Uh, can I get a resolution to open the public hearing on Water District Number Two Project for the CDBG Grant?
I'll make that motion.
Let's. Do that.
Charlie?
Yes.
John? Yes. Karen? Carl?
Yes.
Karen? Yeah. Andy?
Yes.
Okay, privilege of the floor.
Um. Can I just say that for the benefit of those that might not have been at last month's meeting, the purpose of looking for this grant, two million dollars, is because of the shortfall of five and a half million? It is?
Five and a half.
Right. So comparing the most current proposals for doing the construction of Water District Two to the ones that were submitted. Was it five years ago? I don't know.
Yeah, two thousand nineteen.
Right.
So. Six years ago.
Yeah. Um. We're about five and a half million dollars short. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's the purpose for looking for additional grant money.
Yep. Privilege of the floor, everybody. There. Department reports. Uh, Suzie?
I had only one request this month that was for from Kathy Davis about the Simeon Patton family. So.
Okay. Highway perch?
Well. We have. Put it our major painting projects. Um, paperwork for Old State Road has been submitted to the state for reimbursement. We should get the payment. The money back for that in September. Um. We are starting to build a cell burn. We have been paid for the overdues and all contract the last winter. And I'm gonna use that money refill the salt char, the salt burn and upgrade the equipment when we follow. There's a new cutting edge that was developed two years ago. Other towns have played where that we switched one truck over this year. It's a carbonated pregnant rubber blade which follows the contour of the road and scrapes cleaner, which means we can use less product to keep the roads moistening. So. It's. I think it's gonna be about ten thousand dollars to outfit the rest of our trucks with this new cutting edge. Um. All the other towns I've talked to have had really good luck with it. Have cut their self usage by a lot. The state is pushing for less salt, which there's costs, you know? The more you put on, the more cost. So if we can cut it by upgrading our iron, I think we should. We have the extra money that we brought in this year from the contracts. But that being said, we used up our consumables to make that extra money. We need to re. We never ran out of selling sand and salt. It was close. The state ran. And it's been in North Baker. They were out during the worst part of the winter for a few days.
How long do these new edges last roughly?
So I talked to the local highway superintendent. They had one track of this rubber blade has lasted this, the fourth winter.
Oh, wow.
So a lot of the cost is the backer plates. They don't wear out. It's the rubber part that wears out. So once you do the initial cost, then you're just using, you, you have to replace the. But the, the big thing is that they're lasting less material going on the ground behind it. We switched one truck over late winter because it was due to needing new iron, as you know, Karen. They wear out. Um, so we switched one truck over and we saw a noticeable improvement on the road service. So.
Very cool.
I think that we ought to switch all our mainline trucks to that.
Yep.
Hmm.
Because, I mean, it's gonna be a cost savings down the road.
Sure.
And, uh, I know the state is. They're, they're talking about it. Every meeting I go to about less salt, less salt. But nowadays, everybody wants their roads.
Yeah.
So if we can scrape them cleaner, use less material, keep them from icing.
Yeah.
So that was the overage money that I want to use to fill the salt burn. Salt burn got hit really hard and we used a lot of diesel fuel. This, and all the consumables got used up. This winter. It was a. It was pretty hard winter.
It was.
Um.
Fair.
It's all the, the Ogdenville Road Bridges and they're still in the permitting process. Was it tomorrow? The D C is gonna be there. And they gotta do a in. Muscles. Muscles study. So totally, they're gonna be there all day tomorrow. So if you have, if you go to a clinic tomorrow and you have any extra shells, toss them over the.
Yeah.
Um. Other than that, we're mowing, you know, mowing roadsides. And now we're gonna start doing some ditching and driveway work. And, um, by the way, the pickleball court is done. Okay. The cracks have been cleaned, sealed. The posts are up, the nuts are up. It's been painted. And the basketball court is been repainted.
Nice. Silver.
With the. Sorry.
No, I had to get down there and check out the pick them all. Heard about it, but never witnessed anybody playing. So. Well, we haven't yet either, but it just got done.
I was there today. And so, but will that lap where you fill the cracks, I would call it tar? Will that dry so that it won't get on people's clothing and sneakers or?
I've been walking all over it. Didn't get on my shoes.
Okay. I took a stick and I was just kind of fussing with it because.
So you messed up the crack seal.
I did. See how I am?
Well, you know, next year, you know, you better put in a budget to have the whole thing sealed and seal over that.
Right.
There. Other than spending about fifty thousand dollars to resurface that, this, this is what you deal with.
Right. So my question was, but it sounds like you just finished it today. Is that right, Curbs?
We painted it today. We were gonna paint it last Thursday and it rained and then it was nine percent humidity.
Right.
So. We wanted to paint the drive without getting
Right.
washed away.
No, I don't mean to be complaining about it. It was just an observation.
Right.
Just didn't know if it would dry.
What's that? The, the crack seal?
Yeah.
That was done last Thursday.
Okay.
It will. It stays rubbery, but it doesn't, it doesn't. Like, you can put a stick into it, but it's not gonna come off on your clothes or.
I mean, you think of why you're here today?
No.
Okay.
I mean, like I said before, if you're gonna take this to a professional level.
Right.
You might better budget a hundred thousand dollars because it was forty five thousand for one court.
Right. Yeah, no, my question was more about with the, the flat crack. Yeah, crack seal or is that what you've done?
I mean, that's the nature of the beast. It's, I just, I mean, if you wanna save that service, you have to seal those cracks deep water.
But it'll stop the weeds from going up to.
Right.
Thank you. Thanks for making that happen.
Okay. Um. Well, from historical society. Uh, short term rental. Uh, I have completed the typing of the draft and it's with Kevin. Um, he will get it back to us. And on the water, uh, we talked about the CDBG grant. Um, and then um, we also, so that, of that five and a half million, we get that CDBG G grant that'll bring it down to, you know, we get the full two million, that'll bring it down to three and a half million. Um, so uh, we have a resolution later tonight, uh, to go after additional Leah money, um, which means we have to give. We have to resend the seven hundred thousand we have currently in Leah money. But there is up to five million of being awarded per town under this current branch. So that is due in September. Um, and, and we're working vigorously on getting that. And if we get, if we get both of those, then we'll be in excellent shape.
For. Some, but when you say we you mean we and.
Pat. Right. Karen. Frank?
Hello? Hey. Yes, uh, you have to report there. Want to report in the east. I'll say, we had a good time for the month of June as we always do. And, um, we had our picnic the other day and we had seventy six people there. There should have been about eighty six. There was a guy, about, uh, just about ten people called in and they couldn't make it to the picnic. There. There's commitments.
And they had a sorry, I mean.
Go ahead.
No, they had the, uh, mobile command from the sheriff's department there. And they did demos with the drones and everything was pretty cool.
Very good. You know. Of course, you were there, Jonathan. The county's legislature, he was there and Brian. Then. Brian, Brian had, he was having problems over at the, the restroom.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, so. And another thing that we're working on, and it's until September, but it's good food for thought is that Reed Senior Research there. This gentleman, this Greg Olson, is going to be there. I met him in Albany here a few months ago when he was there. He, he knows everything there is at all, most seniors plus and how to negotiate things for the seniors. Very, very nice gentleman. A lot like me when you talk to him. Just very good. Yes. And I think that's about it for right now. But again, I do have a public service announcement to make. And that's the Yankees, when we play the Toronto Blue Jays tonight, they got a three game series. And there should be no rain out there because there, there is a dome there. And, uh, Yankees also had two very good games over the weekend. Very good games. Judge is moving very along with his home roots. That's about it on the public service. That's about all I have and thank you, the town board for what you do for the devil, for our seniors.
Excellent. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um. Suzie, do you want, have there's no else here from up there?
Nobody's here?
No.
Uh.
Plus, I don't see Kathy, but.
Oh, I don't know anything new other than a lady. Are you here late tonight? No. Uh, I know one banner has been placed in Sterling Valley. Uh, I don't know anything else. But there is no historical society report either, right?
No.
We continue to be open on Sundays. And the speaker for next month is myself. Will be doing a presentation on Timco dog food.
You're not alive?
Timco dog food. You're. Yeah, you probably don't know anything about that. Yeah. He is.
Sorry.
There was a dog food factory once located in Markville and then in Fairhaven. And I always say the same thing and I'll say it once more. During, uh, times of high humidity or rain, it smelled so good going through the city of Holden. Hmm. Well, imagine what it was like going through the village of Fairhaven with their dog food act rate.
You didn't have to make. That's. I'd have to walk by there, go to school. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully.
So then. Well. Okay. And when, when are you doing that?
Uh, I think it's August one before maybe or something on that order.
I just saw that again.
Next to Millstone.
Your. Always said.
But. You're. Cruising over there.
So, see, we, we very well might have access to a millstone from that dog food.
Oh.
Company that's down here in Markville right now.
Oh, is that the one?
We've been invited to have it and we're gonna just have to go excavate it um, once the leaves die down and stuff, maybe like this fall.
That's.
And still have a, a nice piece from that dog food factory.
Good.
From Markville Creek, yeah.
That burned down in, uh, about nineteen forty seven or eight.
Yeah.
And, uh, he, Mr. Kimerson, that's where Timco comes from. He rented a factory up in the last guy that they and bussed all those people up there to create dog food uh, until the Fairhaven plant was built. When they came to. Uh, he had been a renderman before that, if you're familiar with what that is.
Yeah.
So nothing. He then had a place for the renderings. Uh, that didn't always smell so good either. Some serve and dog food.
Wow. Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting of June twenty third?
Oh, my.
Motion?
A second. Charlie?
Yeah.
John? Yes. Carl?
Yeah.
Karen? Yeah. Andy?
Yeah.
Motion to accept the supervisor's order for June twenty twenty five. One for the.
I'll make that motion.
Also. That. Okay.
Charlie?
Yeah.
John? Yes. Carl?
Yes.
Karen? Yeah. Andy?
Yes. And.
We didn't. Say.
Okay, the business opened it like fuel, but it's still here. You know.
Is there any discussion on correspondence? I'm kind of curious about the questionnaire for the, um, New York State Consolidated Funding Application Questionnaire. I see a number of no answers, no attachment. It could. Um, was that problematic? Because it, it appears the questionnaire might not have been completely.
I think these are just samples of what the questions are that CDBG is.
Okay.
This is, this is just an example of the questions. It's not. This went to. This is what the grant, a grant company is filling out for this.
Okay. Okay. It made it look like it was our response to the questionnaire, so thanks for.
No, no, it's, it's just the same. It's, it's the questions that they have to answer.
Right.
They haven't. They, that, we haven't turned it in.
Right. Yeah, it's a sample, but it uses Sterling, my address, and also I thought that might have been a complete questionnaire. It's a sample. Thank you. Hmm. And the blind sodas bay signed agreement. Do you know, Akian, how many, um, E U's will be in that water district?
The number that comes to mind, I don't know exactly, but they're all listed here. Um, but if I recall correctly, because I you know, this is mainly a project between Fairhaven and, uh, uh, both.
Fairhaven. And, oh, sorry.
Well, it. And. We, we just had a little difference between, but I believe it was sixty or so.
You say it's listed in the.
They're all, they're all right here.
On the map. Yeah, I tried to figure out how I could count.
Number, the number I recall is sixty.
Okay, about sixty.
In the sixties, yeah.
And I realize that it's not directly impacted because Fairhaven is the water source of, I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah. Actually, Judy, do you know?
Oh, yeah, I know.
Okay. All right. So. Open fuel bins. So.
Okay.
What? Thank you.
And.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. No code. So for diesel two eighty seven five for perecine, clear perecine, three seventy four seventy one diet perecine, three seventy five seventy six propane, one ninety nine and unleaded gas, three thirty one sixty four. Judy, there was true no code?
Yep.
What is? Ian, we.
No.
Okay, um. So for diesel two sixty one forty eight for diet perecine, three thirty three eighty three for clear perecine three thirty four forty three. Three thirty four forty three. Or unleaded. Gas. Will be. Two sixty seven sixty four. For propane, one fifty three eighty three.
I want to create, not those, I was saying, thinking of the dollars.
Okay, one more. We're veto. Yeah. This is just. Uh, this is just what they would charge additional to the. Regular rate. And listed rate. What were the bid specifications? So, we're out with the deal. So. They're, they're saying they're differential, they're just gave differentials. Of point three zero nine zero per gallon for diesel. Clear paraxene, point four five four zero per gallon. Dioparaxene, point eight five zero zero per gallon. Unleaded, point six. And propane, point seven five zero zero. There is no burning price. So, we need to.
What's the terminology they're using?
They're, they just gave what they were charged over the, um. VPN of the differentials over the bid price network, there's a network for prices that fluctuates. But I'm just trying to see if in the bid, bid specification, we required a fixed.
That's what I was talking about. Trying to look it up.
So we would have, we, do we have the Wall Street Journal commodity? Cause. I don't see where.
They're giving us a market price?
They're giving us what their markup would be on the Wall Street Journal commodity futures. But they didn't give us, see, the others gave us a, a fixed price, they just gave us what the markup will be. But there's nothing that specifies that they have to give us a full price, so they didn't.
That's why we're in the house for today, because it's. This won't be active until.
Well, right, because this is the award, that's the award period.
Okay, so, I wonder if they're gonna base this on what the market hits exactly though.
Yeah.
Or I don't know that now, so.
They have any viability.
You mentioned that.
So many tests is a set price.
Yeah, and the thing is, is it doesn't, I mean, reading this. Spec sheet, it doesn't. It says suppliers shall submit individual quotations for part. Of all the above mentioned fuels based on a firm differential over cost. Of the fuels listed in the Wall Street Journal commodities future prices for a one year period. So they did that, it's just. We don't have a fixed price, or they have fixed prices, but there's no requirement for a fixed pricing.
Does EMV state in there, so their, their markup is overboard?
EMV did, yes.
They gave us the full.
They gave us a final price.
They gave us a final price.
Because they gave you the markup over, over the board.
Yeah, they did.
That's not last year they did.
Yeah, no, they, they gave them, they gave what they were marking up, but they.
They gave a firm price.
A firm price, yeah. But what if I, what my point is, there's no clarification, it's gotta be a firm price.
Okay.
Who wrote that one?
It was prior letter, but we have.
It goes out every year.
Yeah, we should have modified it.
Yeah, but. Um. I think what we have to do though is, we have to figure out.
What?
Um, based on today's rates, what these would be.
Would they be a fixed rate though?
On the Wall Street commodity futures, it wouldn't be a fixed rate right now.
Could change, or should it?
Yeah.
Well, after we, if we sign with them, would it change, or?
That's what it's saying, but there's nothing in the document that says it can't, that I see.
Yeah. You're saying that's a little bit too much of a.
Yeah, but it says, well, you're not gonna get a complete detrimental of, of fuel price a year out. I, I mean.
So, what we need to do is, we need to take these, these rates instead, instead of the final price, take the rates. So let's start this whole thing, but, sorry about that, I need to make sure that.
They also buy the rate over, overboard?
That's what I'm looking for. Yes. Okay, so we'll start back with no code, and I'll read the rate overboard. So I read the wrong part, then. Okay. All right, so for diesel. For, we're, we're on, um. No code, again. For diesel, it's point one five. Clear paraxene, point four zero. For dioparaxene, point four zero. For, uh, uh, propane, one, one ninety nine, one dot nine. For unleaded gas, point four zero. Okay, for EMV. For diesel, it would be point zero four seven five. For. We're. Paraxene, it would be point zero three five. Dioparaxene would be point three six five. I'm sorry, clear paraxene, uh, clear paraxene is point zero zero six. For. Unleaded gas, point two seven five zero. For propane, point five five four nine. Uh, Mirabito. Is for diesel, point three zero nine zero. For paraxene, point three four five four zero. Yeah, clear paraxene, sorry. Dioparaxene, point eight five zero zero. For unleaded gas, point six. For propane, point seven five.
Pretty clear.
So. I would name.
Maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, so it'll be EMV.
So it needs to be able to change propane tanks again?
That's so they didn't even bet on. I don't even have different novels.
I would suggest that, you know, if you guys ever find any extra money.
Buy a tank.
Town ought to buy their own propane tank, have a ferry, and that way, every year when you do this, you don't have to pay musical tanks.
No, I understand.
The new company could just pull up.
I can't, I can't believe we didn't, we haven't got a tank of our own.
Because every year when they switch tanks, then you have to, they get to take it out, they have to credit the town. I've got, I still have an EMV tank sitting in the yard up there, which is good.
Is it the one from last year?
Yes.
Yeah, because they probably can't do anything with it, because it's from what, nineteen sixty something? Remember, we were looking at the year.
Well, it hasn't blown up yet.
This is too, make a smoker out of it.
Okay.
All right.
All right, resolutions, um, I have a resolution to pay the audited vouchers. I'll make that a motion.
All second. Charlie?
Yes.
John? Yes. Carl?
Yeah.
Karen? Yeah, Andy?
Yes. Resolution to close public hearing on Water District Two project for the CDBG grant for over two million.
I'll make that motion.
Well, second that.
Charlie?
Yes.
John? Yes. Carl?
Yes.
Karen? Yes, Andy?
Yes. A resolution to hold a public hearing on August eighteenth, twenty twenty five, at six oh five P M. On Water District Number Two project for the water infrastructure improvement and intermunicipal water infrastructure grants funding. And authorize the town clerk to advertise for such hearing. I'll make that motion.
I'll step in.
Fred?
Yes.
John? Yes. Carl?
Yes.
Karen? Yes. Andy?
Yes. Resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign the Williamson law book for computer support for the accountant.
I'll make that one.
I'll second that.
Charlie?
Yes.
John? Yes. Carl?
Yes.
Karen? Yes. Andy?
Yes. Resolution to authorize Kamara Law Firm to create a purchase offer on behalf of the town of twenty thousand dollars to Donald Hess Junior. For the former Mill Pond property tax map number sixteen dot zero zero dash three dash one nine. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Do we have some quick, quick dis- uh, discussion?
Sure.
And, and the reason for the town purchasing this property always?
Um, because Don has approached the town. Um, and would like, he's going to slowly start selling off the property, and that was always. A pond and a source of recreation, and when, when the, um, dam broke, his father, who owned it at the time, had never. Um. You know, refit, refurbished the dam, um, but he wanted to, uh. Talk to us about us, the town, uh, owning it, and, um, with that. It's one of the few, and Kevin has, has researched us, it's one of the few. Properties along the Sterling Creek that is not. Controlled by the state or deed it to the state, it's deed, it's in the deed that it's with the property owner, so the town would then. Um, have jurisdiction over that, that part of the creek as well. And he's, he, he's strictly asking simply for what it's assessed at.
And would the intent be that the town look at, um, building the dam, rebuilding the?
Yes, the, um, but we can't, we've already looked into, uh, grants, but we can't move forward on grants unless we own the property.
Charlie?
Yes.
John? Yes. Carl?
Yes.
Karen? Yes. Andy?
Yes. Okay, a resolution to accept the fuel bids and award EMV.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Charlie?
Yes.
John? Yes. Carl?
Yes.
Karen? Yeah.
Yes.
Megan, what she was during the meeting?
You weren't here before, or until that?